All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 25th Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. We're going to go ahead and, as customary, start with a moment of silence. Go ahead.
So I'd like to take a moment to think of a gentleman named Mike Heinz. He is from Clear Lake. He passed away last Tuesday. I've known Mike for the last 10 years. He's been heavily involved in the community. You may have seen him playing his guitar either at Black History Month events, at church, or as his open mic he's been doing for many years over at Catfish Coffee along with some of his friends. And every week, Mike Heinz was in the Judges Breakfast that meets every Thursday, which review, watches presentations of what's going on in our community. And Mike was a great contributor to that. And obviously, after 10 years, a lot of people have built those relationships with Mike. Mike came from Chicago with a very Chicago politics perspective. And boy, did he bring that level of courage to our conversation to call it how it is. I don't think I've met somebody as courageous as Mike in speaking his mind. But he was a kind soul. He was a great addition to our community, and he's going to be dearly missed. And so I would love to have a moment of silence for him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any CAO?
We have no items.
All right, no items. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Just note that consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial, but they can be pulled from the Board of Supervisors or from a member of the public. So I'll start with the board. Is there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
Open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Ma'am?
I'm not sure if that's...
Come to the microphone, please, and state your name. Sorry.
Hi, my name's Beth Kershaw. I'm not sure what the consent agenda, but I wanted to discuss the actual agenda, the 10 o'clock meeting of...
That will be, yeah.
Is that next?
That's, that will, when we go to that item, that's when you can discuss that.
When you go to the item. Okay.
Yes, yeah. All right. Anyone on Zoom? I'll bring it back to the board for action. Okay, if you would like to unmute, but if this is about the item on, at 10 o'clock, then we will address that at that time.
I'm sorry, board. I think I may have accidentally pressed that button. I apologize for the interruption.
All right, thanks.
Well, Mr., if public comments close, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let's see, we're on timed items, public input. Public input, if there's not, if something is not on the agenda, you can come up and speak for three minutes. If it is on the agenda, we'll have you come back at that time and address that public input then. Just know that if it's not on the agenda, we cannot respond to it, but we'll do our best to associate you with the specific director or supervisor in your district. Ma'am?
Chair Crandall, board, thank you. This is a quick question, so I'm sorry. I don't know the procedure. This isn't something that's not on the agenda, but it's to request a continuance for something on the agenda.
Ma'am, we'll, we'll deal with that at the time.
At the time, okay. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Still have, with the public input?
Good morning. Vance Ricks, County Surveyor. And I'm pleased to announce that our deputy county surveyor, Kara Solomon, has just passed her national surveyor's exam.
Awesome.
For somebody who went through this process, oh, 16 years ago, it's, it's quite an accomplishment. And it's 110-question exam, six hours. And we're very, very proud of her. And everyone in the Public Works Department is ecstatic. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Vance.
Hi, good morning. Anna C. Antana here, representing the County Office of Education and Children's Council. And I just really, really want to appreciate all of you for your commitment and dedication to our community. I know you guys have been hit all left and right and up and down for everything, but just know that I appreciate you even when we don't agree on things. And I'm just really glad that you guys are supervisors on our board. With that, I'd like to invite you to remember that next month is April, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. So please, as you make decisions, please always have children in the forefront. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Justin Quill. Friday, there was an incident with my public, all my personal information was shared on a public forum on your board thing. It was posted so people could take pictures of it and send it to me and screenshot that my, everything that I submitted to the police department to do a criminal background check was let the publics be. And I filed a complaint already about her not reacting to this stuff within the last month. And so it just keeps happening. I feel it's out of retaliation. I feel that because we can't get into the Darby era because somebody called her the N-word, and the county had to let her go for that, or whatever happened racially, but we can't get into those files. And I did a background check. I passed by the last sheriff. And somebody tricked me and to go and resubmit. And we have emails with Eric Porter and other people talking about my criminal background. This should have never been shared. That's my personal information. That stuff's over 10 years old, any of it. And I've been past and I worked for other companies already in the cannabis department. I've worked for Flocana. I've worked for all these other things. Yes, I went through an EEOC case with Flocana. I'm okay with talking about that. I was born with this disability, and I, sorry I ask questions, but I really love this county. I grew up working for the Men in the House when I was 18 years old. I worked for the parrot orchards here. I want to live and retire here. Please help me keep our dignity as a county and not have somebody go against a land use permit and attack a person for a land use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, at this time, I'll close public input.
Mr. Chair, can I make a point of order?
Yes.
Just if it's possible to vacate the doorway area, we have a lot of people here. We have people blocking the door. There's got to be a seat somewhere. Raise your hand if you have a seat next to you, just so that we can make sure that we have that cleared.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a great day, guys.
Sorry, Chair.
All right, no worries. So 6.3, let's see, are we at the time? Or 6.2, I'm sorry. I checked it already. So our pet of the week. And so we, come on up.
Hi, my name's Sarah Schramm. I'm with Lake County Animal Care and Control. Today I have Hamilton. Things don't always start out perfect when you're trying to pick somebody to bring up here. We chose him. This is, he's a year old. He was left on a chain in the rain, in the mud. So they don't always come perfectly trained. You have to start out training them sometimes. He's done very good. We don't normally take him out in public until he's ran for a couple hours. He didn't get that this morning, but he's just a puppy. And he's doing really good so far. So if you would like to spend some time with him in the play yard after he's ran for a little bit, our address is 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, and you can call us at 707-263-0278.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. All right. So we are, all right, so now we are at 6.3, consideration of presentation of the semi-annual Employee Service Awards for the County of Lake. And so Pam Cherish, give the floor to you.
I don't think I need the mic. Can everybody hear me? Good morning. As Chair Crandall said, this is our semi-annual Employee Service Award. We try to take out time to celebrate our Morse... Can you hear me? Okay.
There we go.
Is that a little bit better? So this is our semi-annual Employee Service Award. We take pride in taking time twice a year to honor our most important asset, which is our employees. We'll be calling you by department. Department head or designate will come up and acknowledge their employees. We want to just thank you for your service. And we're going to start out with the Ag Department.
Yep. Does Mike work?
Yes.
Weird, back is towards everybody. So for the Agriculture Department, we have Michael Sobri, who is celebrating 10 years. He's actually been with the department just a little over a year now, but we are very fortunate to have him. So Mike?
I don't need it. I'm Laura.
Oh.
Ford's late, so.
Okay. On behalf of Rich Ford, we'd like to thank Laura for five years of service.
Thank you.
Next is our Auditor Controller.
I want to recognize Chris Amonte for 20 years of extremely dedicated, loyal service to Lake County, month after month, keeping payroll going no matter what is going on. So anyway, thank you. Thank you for everything, every day.
Oh, my goodness. We have a whole bunch of people.
All right. Hello, I'm Elise Jones, and I'm the Director of Behavioral Health. And we have a lot of staff, I think only one of whom is here today. But we have several. I'll just read them off. Toni Delang is a Peer Support Specialist. She's been with the department for five years. Melissa Farrell has, is a clinical specialist. She's been with the department for five years as well. We have Harold Hoover, Facilities Maintenance Worker Senior, five years. Donald Laub, he's a Behavioral Health Case Manager, five years. And then we do have Ms. Leslie Rivera. Please come up, Leslie. She's been with our department for five years. I just want to say Leslie is a friendly face. She is one of the first people you meet or talk to with our department. And she is, she's always nice and kind and welcoming. And she would make me feel really comfortable if I was coming into our clinic for the first time. Thank you, Leslie. All right. We also have Patricia Santa Cruz. She's a Peer Support Specialist of five years. We have Ms. Debbie Tapia. She's Staff Services Analyst of 10 years. She makes sure that the bills get paid. Thank you, Debbie. And Ms. Jamalyn Trollo, she's a Licensed Clinical Social Worker. She's been with us for 10 years. And lastly, we have Ms. Lori Grog. She's a Supervising Behavioral Health Clinician of 20 years.
Good morning. Mireya Turner, Director of Community Development. I just have one. Trish Turner, come on up. Trish Turner is celebrating five years with us. When I met her, she was a CDD. Stand up here. Come on, come on, come on, come on. She was just a CDD technician. She is just starting. She was a baby in the apartment. And I thought, man, this woman really knows what she's doing. And she has taken classes in planning. She has, she teaches us things that she learns. She's always excited about new stuff. Like many of us, she's her own worst critic. So I really love this opportunity to publicly tell her how awesome she is.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Faraco, Deputy Director of Health Services. And I'm super nervous to be up here. Today, we're honoring three staff on our team. We have Brent Albrecht. He's with the Veterans Service Office. The Veterans Service Officers help veterans navigate the very complex Department of Veterans Affairs Department, helps them access education benefits and process disability claims, gets information on the GI Bill and VA Home Loans. They really are the bridge to access benefits for our veterans that they earned through service to our country. So thank you, Brent. Next up, we have Rainey Grafton. Rainey has been with the Lake County Health Services Department for the past five years. During her time with the department, she served under different capacities, including Health Program Support Specialist II, Staff Services Analyst, and Program Manager, and most recently, as Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. Additionally, Rainey played a fundamental role in coordinating and providing services to the Lake County community during the COVID pandemic. We are very grateful for her time and commitment to our department. She is leaving us for greener pastures in Texas, and I am taking her place here. So we have two more, two more weeks with her, but huge thank you to Rainey for all of her hard work. And last up, we have Shawna Parsons. Shawna, come on up. Shawna is an outstanding member of the Environmental Health Team. Perhaps Shawna's greatest contribution to the team is her can-do attitude paired with her willingness to dive into the work. We are very happy to have her, and that's compliments of Craig, who's not able to be here. Next, we have me with Human Resources. And we're honoring Cherish Holcomb, who's been with the county for 10 years. She's been with HR for three. She makes working in HR fun. She has an amazing sense of humor. She's also one of our creative people. I have no creativity whatsoever. So presentations, brochures, the service award, all went to her. Both her and Arandi improved it. She's the one that hounds you to get you here, get pictures of you. HR's been a better place with her. I'm sad to say she's leaving for greener pastures, but we will miss her, and we thank her for everything. Next, we have IT.
Thank you. Well, good morning. I'm Shane with IT Department. First up, we have Jeff Haas. Jeff's been with us for 15 years. And Jeff has been constantly learning and growing in our department. He promoted up from an Information Technology Analyst I. And this is a guy that is always asking for more to do. I mean, if you've ever met somebody like that, you very much want to keep them around because it's like he'll have seven or eight things going and ask for another project to do because he's bored. That's kind of the type of guy he is. That's kind of the type of guy he is. And he just has an incredible work ethic, and I just really appreciate all the hard work and just sincerity that he puts into everything that he does. So he couldn't be here this morning. I don't know if "couldn't" is the right word. Probably not super comfortable with, you know, having praise directed in his direction. But anyway, really appreciate Jeff, and he's just contributed so much to our department. So appreciate Jeff. And next, we've got Kathy Lekatos. Kathy's been with us for 30 years. And Kathy, you've seen a whole lot of change, an incredible amount of change, over many, many years. And one thing I really appreciate about Kathy is she's extremely generous. If you've ever worked with Kathy, she's never going to rush you or make you feel like she doesn't have time for you. She's always made time for me in the dumb questions that I have about things that I probably should know more about. But she's never made me feel bad about that or done anything other than just try to further the goals of the department and the county. And the other thing that I think that, you know, we don't recognize enough is these folks that have been here for this many years, there's an incredible amount of institutional knowledge that they've gathered and an incredible amount of understanding about the way things have been in the past and why we might not want to go back down certain roads. So Kathy, you've been extremely valuable in that regard, and, you know, you just know so much about so many things that happen around here that aren't even necessarily IT-related. And a lot of people in this room and in this county rely on you and really appreciate you. So I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you.
Next, we have the Library.
Thank you. So I'm Christopher Beach, County Librarian. And Lisa Mosher is who we're honoring today. She's been with the library for five years, but she's been there longer than that as both an extra help and a volunteer. She works at the Redbud Library in Clear Lake. And Lisa does everything from tech help for seniors, helping people on the computers in the library, and she runs a knitting group and creates the library newsletter. So she does so much for our community, and she's just a wonderful person to have at the Redbud Library.
Next up, Probation.
Good morning. I'm Chief Probation Officer Wendy Monfrans. And our first recipient is Brianna Hudson. She has been with the county for five years, and we need to get her in a picture of a probation outfit because she started with the Sheriff's Department and saw the greeter patchers, so came over to probation. So she is a shining light and is our Defensive Tactics Instructor, and she's just a great, great employee. So congratulate. All right. Next, we have Agi Perez. Agi has been with the department for 10 years. Oh, wow. And he looks like, he doesn't look like that anymore. He started at our Juvenile Hall back in the day before we closed it, and now he's the Supervisor of our Juvenile Division. And it's his wife's birthday, so they're out celebrating today. So thank you to Agi. Okay. And finally, last but definitely not least, we have Amy Stevenson. Amy has been with the department for 20 years. And she's actually, come on up. She's actually one of the first people I met when I came to probation. And she started our Juvenile Hall and became a Supervisor there, and then came over. And now she writes reports for our court, and she's just a wonderful human being, and we're so happy that she's still with us. Thanks, Amy.
Next up, Public Services.
Thank you. Large unit with Public Services. And first coming up is Dana, but Ricky Reyes. Ricardo Reyes is a heavy equipment operator at the landfill. A beautiful day like this, he wanted to be on his big Tonka truck, I think so. So yeah, he chose to not be here. But Dana Schott, Dana Schott has been with Public Services for five years, but for about 13 years before that, she was an extra help employee as a janitor in this building and others, then the lead janitor. Then she went on and got her Associate's Degree. She volunteered in the office in Public Services and then was hired on permanently as an office assistant. So she's a good testament for hard work. She brings, you know, a very warm and positive spirit to the office. She's what I would say every director wants as the face of the department. So Dana, I can't thank you enough for what you do, and five slash 18, I guess, is what we'll say. So thank you.
Public Works?
We have Kara Solomon, our Deputy County Surveyor, for 20 years of service. And I have to say, she runs the Surveying Department. And if it wasn't for her, I don't know if I would be standing here right now with you. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Alicia Ayella, Deputy Director, Public Works Administration Department. Alicia, she does just about everything in our department. And if it wasn't for her, I don't think we could manage without you. And she's very cheerful, and you can see that all the way with her staff and our whole empire department. We thank you very much. 25 years.
Next up, Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Board. Good morning, Luke Bingham, Sheriff, Coroner. As is with the nature of our business, most of those people being recognized today are either handling calls for service, working in the floor in a correctional facility, or sleeping so they can come back to work tonight. So first up is Jeremy Mendelson, Deputy Sheriff, with five years of service. Next is Cody White, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant and our SWAT Team Commander, 10 years of service. Sarah Hardisi, Deputy Sheriff, with 15 years of service. John Drury, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, with 20 years. And then one of our Correctional Sargent's who happened to be in the building today, and we convinced him to come down here and pull him away from his duties for a little bit. Sergeant Ty Hockett with the Correctional Facility and our Transport Sergeant. And then lastly, Cecilia Jimenez, our Deputy Sheriff Corrections, with 20 years of service.
Social Services?
Good morning. I'm Rachel Dillman Parsons, Social Services Director, and I do have a large department and 15 staff to honor today. Sorry for the long remarks. So Victor Yuri. Victor, your journey from IHSS to Adult Protective Services reflects your dedication and growth in serving our most vulnerable populations. You're one of the most nicest, smartest, and most gifted and enthusiastic social workers that your supervisor has ever had the pleasure of working with. Congratulations, Victor. Lisa Faraco. You're not out of it yet. Lisa, you have been an invaluable part of Social Services for the past five years, holding together difficult programs with what seems like bubble gum and shoestring. I will miss you, and I'm very proud of your promotion to Deputy Director in Public Health. You have only bright things in your future. Congratulations. You're welcome. Joseph Gonzalez. Joseph, I appreciate your steadfast commitment to IHSS. Over the past five years, your consistency and reliability have been invaluable to the team. Brianna Guzman. Brianna, you are an invaluable member of Eligibility, a bright and shining star who has worked your way up through our department. Azure Hammack. Azure, you are a devoted and dependable member of the department, working your way up through eligibility to a Lead Worker. You represent our department with professionalism and positivity. You always have a friendly smile for customers and coworkers alike. Congratulations, Azure. Virginia Peak. Virginia, you hold it together for us in the Area Agency on Aging. Your organization and support help us be successful. Congratulations, Virginia. Lacey Richardson. Lacey, your five-year journey from Adult Protective Services to Social Worker is a show of resilience, hard work, enthusiasm, and determination to grow. You're one of the most reliable, hardworking, enthusiastic, and loyal social workers that your supervisor has ever had the honor of working with. Congrats. Jasmine Solario. Jasmine, you are a phenomenal job search facilitator and accurately process our E2 Lite surveys to measure our parents' work participation rate. You're a star at helping motivate families towards self-sufficiency and success. Congratulations. Jason Titus, our Office Assistant Supervisor. Your leadership and dedication to public authority has made a lasting impact. Congratulations, Jason. Lisa Walker Coleman. Thank you for five years of committed service. Your progress from IHSS to public authority, public guardian, displays your adaptability and passion for client advocacy. Your supervisor says you're a real team player who always has your back and will say, "I'll do it." Congratulations, Lisa. So those were our five-year recipients. Onto our 10-year recipients. We have Abraham Asivas. Abraham, you have been a reliable employee over the past 10 years in investigating social work for child welfare. Your dedication to helping improve lives of children and families in our community is commendable. You're dependable and widely skilled, often helping your coworkers out, whether it comes to computers, cars, or home projects. You're amazing, and you do it all. J.C. Baker. J.C., you are on the front lines daily, serving the public with a smile. Thank you. Our Employment Services Lobby works smoothly because of you. Next up, we have Peggy Johnson. She is a little under the weather, otherwise she would be here. She is my Administrative Assistant. So she is the glue that holds admin together for me. As my Administrative Assistant, you juggle so much with kindness and common sense, and she puts up with me. Her placid demeanor helps her navigate difficult situations daily with grace. Peggy is also multi-talented. She plays in a local band, so I will give a shameless plug here. She's going to be at the Riviera Clubhouse May 10th. Check her out. I'm grateful for you every day, Peggy. And our last 10-year recipient, Hongfei Liu. Hongfei, your intelligence, kindness, and dedication have made a tremendous impact at the Department of Social Services over the past 10 years, and your contributions have strengthened our team in countless ways. I sincerely appreciate all your hard work and commitment. All right. Last but not least, we have a 15-year recipient. Her children are under the weather, so she was not able to make it. She is on the Zoom, listening to all the nice things I'm about to say. So Crystal, you are our fearless and innovative manager over CalWorks. You've accomplished so much, including leading our staff to timely and accurate medical processing, which is no small feat post-COVID. I look forward to seeing your amazing accomplishments continue well into the future, and I know you're gunning for my job. So congratulations.
Special Districts?
Good morning. I'm Robyn Boray, the Special District Administrator, and I have five staff that are here, four are here today. Paul Higdon, he is an Electrical Mechanical Technician. And, come up here. He's used to being outside, but I have pulled him into the office to work on a very special generator project that is critical to all of our infrastructure. Joyce White. She is our Customer Service Technician and the face of Water Bar Apartments. And she provides excellent customer service and can handle any of our hostile clients or customers that don't want to pay their bills. She is fabulous. And Jesse Salmaron. He's our Fiscal Manager, and I don't have to worry about if we have budget or where things are going to come from because we just asked Jesse. And me being from the background of fiscal, it's quite an honor to work with you, Jesse, that I trust you with our money, and thank you for all you do. And Dennis Wilson. I believe he is at the Kelseyville or the Soda Bay Water Plant, making water for our customers, and he's been here for 15 years. And for 25 years, our Deputy Special District Administrator, Scott Horni. He has been in Special Districts for, what, about seven years? Six years? We did steal him from Public Works, and he is definitely our go-to individual. With all the knowledge he has about Special Districts and his engineering background of how things work and what we need to do to move this district forward, his compliance experience and everything, he is truly appreciated, and thank you.
Next up, we have U.S. Cooperative Extension.
Good morning. Matthew Barnes, UC Cooperative Extension, here to honor Nicole Gentry on 20 years of service with the department. Come on up, Nicole. So Nicole is not only the first smiling face you see in the office, she's also at our 4H events, at our Pancake Breakfast. She's out in the community and institutional knowledge, to say the least. In my first year especially, I couldn't have done it without her. So she has her fingerprints on a very complicated department. She has her fingerprints on all aspects of it. So it's my honor to appreciate Nicole.
And next, we're going to be honoring our Department Heads. Susan?
All right. All right. First, we'll be starting out with Miraya Turner, our Director for Community Development. And I worked with Miraya when I was a Planning Commissioner, and I remember like just watching her lead when I was fairly new to this because I didn't really have an idea of what I was getting into. getting into. But after working with her, I realized how much knowledge she has in the department. So thank you for your service, Mariaa. Next, we have Tammy Widener. She's the Director of Child Support Services, and we are honoring her for 35 years with the County of Lake. Thank you for your service, thank you for running the department, and all the work you've done throughout the years. It's quite a bit of time, and so you've invested your life here, and you've been doing a great job. Thank you. Anything else? I'll let the board go ahead, and if there's anyone that would like to make a comment. Sam, do they need to take a giant picture? Go ahead, we'll go with the board's comments first.
I love celebrating twice a year. Lake County's finest. You all dedicate your lives to the service and the people of our county to uplift our communities, make our community safer, brighter, and better, and thank you for all of your dedication.
Just want to say I appreciate all of our county employees. We are a service organization, and we wouldn't be successful, we couldn't do what we do, without the dedication of all of our staff, so thank you.
And I don't want to echo what's already been said, but I do want to give you all a standing ovation, because thank you so much for everything that you do every single day of the year. You put in your life, you put in your blood, sweat, and tears. You deal with the worst and you deal with the best, and can't appreciate enough the years of service that you've put into it.
All right, well, I'm going to also thank you all for your hard work and dedication.
It's appearing before the picture.
Yeah, we are taking a picture, by the way. But I think one of the balances that I've learned to put together as a supervisor was to balance the needs of the constituents, but also the high demand that you all deal with. So in a sense, it's like we're the compressors in the middle, trying to balance the overload and a lot of other things that you have to do, the time it takes to get something on the agenda, all of the things behind the door that constituents don't know about, what it takes, the processes. So it's our job to, in essence, protect you at times from some of the onslaught of what someone mentioned about the good and the bad when it comes to constituents or customers. So thank you for all that, and I know for me, I'll continue to do my part in balancing that. And now, I think, Sam, you want to do the picture from here? Do you want to just take the picture out there? There you go. That works.
Okay, so we're going to switch. So if I could have the supervisors come out here, I'm going to go up there and take your notice. Oh, this is much better. We got to do this more often. Ready? Everybody smiling? Okay. All right, one more. You ready? You done? Okay.
So we're going to take a five-minute break, so everyone can shake hands or get where they need to go, so we'll be back at 9:55. Welcome back from our break. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.4. We're sitting as the Lake County Board of Housing Commission, consideration of presentation status of the Lake County Housing Commission. And we have Social Services Director Rachel Dillman Parsons here.
Good morning, Board, sitting as the Housing Commission. As you said, I'm Rachel Dillman Parsons, Social Services Director. I'm also the Executive Director of the Lake County Housing Commission, which is Lake County's public housing authority. With me today is Lisa Faraco, our previous program manager over Housing, who has kindly enough agreed to be here. She's still our expert in these programs. We have our supervisor in the Housing Department, Teresa Wald, and we also have Kelly Page, who is our Deputy Director in Administration. Online, we have Gus Becerra, who is going to make some comments a little later in our presentation regarding a regional housing authority, along with his staff, Alicia Parker and Marco Cruz. I'm going to go ahead and share a PowerPoint now. And now we have 15 minutes, so I'm going to try and keep my bit to 15 or less. Everything is layering on top of each other, sorry. All right, here we go. So this is just the introductory slide. This is going to be a status update, which lands on our recommendation to improve services here in Lake County by voluntary transfer to the regional housing authority. So where are we at here in Lake County with the Lake County Housing Commission? We're small, and we don't have a lot of staff, nor a lot of funding, so we currently operate three Section 8 rental voucher programs. Those are the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is for low-income families to secure safe housing. It is not an ent-. It is not an entitlement program. It's based on a list of qualified applicants that we work through. The list does take us quite a while to get through. Vouchers don't often come up available in Lake County. Veterans Affairs or VASH is another program we operate. This is specifically focused on veterans along the same lines of HCV, but they also coordinate service with VA. An emergency housing vouchers was a short-term program. It is no longer operating. We still have a few families on this program. So, our utilization is currently about 80%. Part of this is we froze issuing new vouchers in the new year with some concerns regarding federal funding. I think hopefully we're seeing things level out a little and we can potentially lift that and go back to issuing vouchers. So, that's where we are at currently in Lake County. One of our problems is administrative funding. Just to grow services, we need staff, right? We would need staff to apply for grants. If we wanted to develop property, we would need staff with expertise in property development, which we don't currently have within my department. So, in order to make housing currently work, the county has agreed to contribute a general fund in equivalent to one full-time employee caseworker. Although that would be $83,000 per year, we only had the position filled for six months last year. So, it was, was half that that the county contributed. In addition, we're covering about $280,000 out of Social Services Fund for Administration. That would be for, for staffing to operate these programs. HUD is providing the funding for the actual vouchers. And just to have it on radar, we have some potential cuts coming in regard to reduced admin fees and housing assistance payments that we may see in coming year. So, where does that leave us? How do we grow our program faced with all of this? We have conferred with a lot of different experts regarding this, including HUD. We have spoken with Lisa Judd, who is the CAO in Housing. We have spoken with Mendocino County's Public Housing Authority, and we have spoken with the Regional Housing Authority about options. And we need to diversify is essentially what needs to happen in order to have additional funding streams if we are to survive and grow. So, how do we get there? There's a couple of different options we talked about. Number one is not the one we recommend, but if we wanted to keep Lake County Housing Commission either within my department or potentially hand it to Lisa Judd, we would need funding for staff to grow the program. Not my recommendation. The recommendation we are making that HUD also agrees with and Lisa Judd agrees with, she'll come up here and speak after Gus speaks, is a voluntary transfer to Regional Housing Authority. They can offer growth thanks to their expertise that we currently aren't able to offer. What happens if we do nothing? It just continues as is and we are only able to manage Section Eight vouchers. So, here is where I'm landing on the recommendation and Gus will speak next. We're recommending a voluntary transfer to the Regional Housing Authority. That means handing our housing authority to the Regional Housing Authority. They are Sutter, Yuba, Colusa and Nevada Counties. In order to join the Regional Housing Authority, we do have to touch one of the counties. So, they're our neighbors. They are able to operate project-based vouchers, which would bring more housing to Lake County through property development. They also have a family self-sufficiency program, which is a program that allows families on Housing Choice vouchers to set up a savings account and towards purchasing their own home. So, it leads to homeownership in their county. They're committed to ensuring we have representation on their board and making sure Lake County's vouchers serve Lake County. So, this, in our opinion, is the best option for expanding houses, housing services here in Lake County. And I will hand it over to Gus at this point. Thank you, Gus.
Thank you, Rachel. Can everybody hear me okay? I hope. My name is Gus Becerra, the Executive Director of the Regional Housing Authority, serving the Counties of Sutter, Yuba, Nevada and Colusa Counties. With me today is Alicia Parker, our voucher program, all voucher programs Department Head. And with us also is Marco Cruz, our Chief Financial Officer. So, thank you for your time, Board. As, as Rachel mentioned, we, we, we serve four counties, but our, our genesis was Sutter County. At one point, probably going back 15 years ago or so, maybe a little longer, we were only the housing authority of the County of Sutter. And with issues similar to what Rachel explained to you, the County of Nevada approached us and we, we, we regionalized, consolidated with them. And obviously, we've done that to additional occasions with Colusa and Yuba Counties. So, we are experienced in that matter. We, you know, we, we, we serve four counties. And as Rachel mentioned, it, it, it makes sense geographically if you approve this to, to add Lake County into our region. We, between the three of us, you know, Marco, Alicia and I, we have, we've been in the affordable housing industry close to 50 years, all with RHA. Our, our team is, is experienced in, experienced in developing relationships, outreach that will only benefit Lake County and its, and its voucher holders. We, we, the family self-sufficiency program that Rachel talked about, it, it, it's a voluntary program for us. Many years ago, when HUD created the program, it, it was obligatory for housing authorities that opted in. And once you, you met a certain amount of graduates, as HUD calls them, as we call them, then, then you can opt out of the program. But that program is, is very popular with, with our Board of Commissioners and it's very rewarding in seeing folks, you know, go from, from relying on all sorts of government assistance to graduating and coming off of, in many cases, all government assistance. They don't all move on to homeownership and that is not a HUD requirement. Some do. Our last graduate that, that Alicia presented to our Board at our last Board meeting walked away with an escrow account of over 20,000 bucks. She is in escrow to, to purchase a home. So, that does happen from time to time. And so, we, we've opted to, to keep that program, even though we, we can opt out of it. And we, we applied for a grant to HUD to, to pay for salary and benefits of our family self-sufficiency coordinator, who, who works with these families and facilitating referrals to agencies where they may need help in, in, in say, going to college or in building up a resume or household budgeting, what have you. And these folks work towards these goals in a contract that they sign in a, in a HUD-form contract over a five-year period with an option to extend up to two years. And then they graduate. Not, not all participants do. It, it's definitely, they, they got to do the late work. You know, all we do is facilitate services for them. But it is up to that individual participant to lay out their goals and, and do the hard work to, to, to become self-sufficient. So, we currently have somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 70 participants. We're kind of in ramp-up mode actually right now to, to get it to 100 participants. And if, if you approve in Adelaide County, that'll just add to our efforts in outreach to your voucher participants and introducing that program to them and explaining it to them and how beneficial it could be to them. So, yeah, we'd like to do that. Rachel talked about project basing. We, we've done that numerous times. We, we've been doing that for about 15 years now. In fact, we've done it so much and we've gotten so good out of it that we've actually hit our cap. HUD has a cap on the amount of vouchers within your allocation that you're allowed to project base. And that is up to 30% targeting certain populations. And in, in our four counties, we're, we're not quite there, but we're upwards of, of, of probably 90% of the 30% that we're allowed to project base. So, how that works is we project base to, in order to develop projects. These vouchers, when they are project-based, makes the economics, the economic feasibility of a project much more feasible than without them. So, so we've, we've been doing that a lot. We have probably project-based over 20 projects in the, in the, in our four-county region. And we are committed to, to looking at those opportunities in Lake County if, if given, given the opportunity.
So, if we join.
Which was a good segue into project development. Probably the hardest of our, of our tasks, the hardest of our, our jobs is probably project development. I'm telling you what you already know, but it, you know, the, in the last decade, decade and a half, we've probably developed over 20 projects, but it's not easy. There's just so many hurdles and challenges that we're already, always facing with, with high interest rate markets now, you know, during the pandemic.
So, there, there was a question from, I think, Director.
Oh, no, I was just going to add a comment. I, I wanted to make sure the Board understood that if we were to join, 30% of Lake County's vouchers could be used for project-based development.
Yes, thank you, Rachel. And that, that is, that is where we've hit our cap in the other four counties. But with Lake County, there's that opportunity to use 30% of your total allocation to project base within Lake County. You know, and as I was saying, it is, it is, it is difficult to project develop in, in this era of higher interest rates, supply chain issues that came upon during the pandemic. They haven't all recovered. There's still a lot of supply chain issues with electric components. The artificial intelligence community is pretty much grabbing everything they can. So, which makes construction projects harder. The latest talk of tariffs that get turned on one day, turned off the next day has had rattled the markets as well in, in material pricing. The capital markets where, where investors into affordable housing are also a bit skittish and rattled right now. So, all that being said, that it, we are committed to, to looking at development opportunities in Lake County using the tools of the project-based voucher and other assets and relationships we have and experience. But to manage expectations, it is a, it, it's hard. It's not simple and it is very time-consuming. I'll give you an example. It looks like we were just awarded some tax credit financing for a project in Yuba City for 133 apartments. And that, we've been working on that one for probably six or seven years now. It's taken that long to put that financing together. It, it, that's probably the longest it's taken out of any of our projects. There's others that we've hit, you know, a lot faster in financing these deals. It takes a, a, a large stack of financing, as we call a lasagna of stacking, which we would.
Sir, I have a question from the Board right here, I think, real quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I think this, this has always been a priority of the Board to figure out how we can better serve the residents and expand this program. So, this seems like a great opportunity. I'm wondering about the position that's general fund allocated that we created. Is that going to remain?
It would come back to the county.
It'll come back to the county. Oh, that was the answer I was hoping for.
And, and I just wanted to add that Commissioner Debbie Figaro is with us on Zoom. I didn't get a chance to say that yet, but just wanted to add that as well. So, we do have our Board here.
Sorry to derail you, Gus.
No, no problem. You probably have to interrupt.
Another question about the 30% of the vouchers that could be leveraged for projects. Is that, can that be held over year to year so they can be banked? Or what, or is it a single year?
We have enough vouchers that haven't been assigned that we have them available now. And then Gus, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially these become vouchers for people to live in the project that was developed, right?
Yeah, no, that sounds correct, Rachel. The project-based vouchers stay with the project. Just to simplify it, they don't, they don't have the, the mobility. You know, but a tenant moves into a, a, a property that has project-based vouchers, they must use that voucher at the property. If they decide to move, they can't take that voucher with them.
It gets assigned to somebody else at that property.
Right, right. Because that project-based voucher contract actually enters into a 20-year contract with the development with an option to renew for another 20 years. And all that is done for the purposes of economic feasibility of the property. So, that, that's what HUD requires a minimum 20-year contract with the property so that those vouchers stay there for a minimum of 20-year. And as I mentioned, there's an option to renew for a second 20-year period.
Lisa, you had your hand up real quick and then Supervisor Sabatia, if you could follow.
Um, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I don't want to understate the value of these project-based vouchers for our community. We have been pushed by HUD to move towards project-basing vouchers. We simply do not have the expertise or the staffing to do this type of work. If we want to get here, it will be expensive and time-consuming. So, joining with a housing authority that has a, a history, a successful history of project development, project-basing vouchers is an opportunity here. The, the value cannot be understated.
All right. Supervisor Sabatia, if you wanted to.
Thank you very much. I, the, the topic of project-based vouchers came up at the Continuum of Care and I've been more and more curious since that has come into play. I know that we've spoken with Lisa Judd with Social Services. There doesn't seem to be a negativity towards moving in that direction and it would help so many. If my numbers are correct, and I'm just playing with numbers in my mind here, we have approximately 250 vouchers, 176 that are used. We're missing out on about 74, meaning if we can have 75, which would be the 30% of 250, we can help cover the lack of housing that is available currently for the vouchers that we never get to use every single day, year here. So, I think that moving in that direction is the way to go, or at least it would be helpful to move in that direction. I also like the idea of being part of a larger entity where, especially right now, where there's unpredictability in where we're going, what HUD is doing. There's been some cutbacks, not certain what that looks like as far as impacting housing authorities. We've seen some of it at the Continuum of Care, but not sure about the rest. Being part of a larger entity helps us be more nimble, be more sharing of resource, able to share resources and continue to serve the people here in Lake County more often. You, you spoke, Gus, a little bit about your program of trying to get people to graduate through those programs that you offer. Would you have a graduation rate of how many people are actually going through that entire program? Because I'm very interested in the, in that concept. I think that should be part of any housing program is to try to get people out of the program and graduate past that. What is your graduation rate that you are currently seeing?
Great question, Supervisor. Alicia, I, I don't have that information with me, but you probably have a good idea, don't you?
Graduation from the FSS program, it's a five-to-seven-year program. And right now, we're seeing approximately like 60 to 70% of the graduations. Not everyone does not graduate for a negative reason, though. There's a lot of factors that go into graduating. Some of our folks actually go off the program before they're able to meet their goals and the goals are the huge part for the graduation requirement. So, even though that seems like a low number, we do have a lot of folks that go off for good reasons as well.
Well, I personally think that number is much higher than I anticipated it to be. So, I'm actually pleased with that. I do have another question, but it looks like you want to add something to that.
Yes, please add.
So, the FSS program was a program we did have here in Lake County. It was very limited. We were not able to provide the homeownership, counseling and a lot of the wraparound stuff that goes into that program. We had to slowly phase it out. We did have people graduate. We did have people buy homes here in Lake County with that program. It was successful here, but we were not able to hire that FSS coordinator position after multiple postings. We had to roll into just a standard case manager and let go of that program because we simply didn't have the expertise or the resources to run it here in our small agency.
Supervisor Sabate, thank you for that.
Uh just another reason why uh looking at voluntarily transitioning out is uh the way to go. Uh just two more questions. Uh one, when you do these project based vouchers, do you own these projects? Or are they owned by a developer that you contract with? And the reason I ask is, I know at my mind probably works in ways that may not be uh ways that are uh that we're able to work with, but if we can get those vouchers to pay back into the authority so the authority can continue to do more work rather than money going to outside entities where then we have to find new sources of funding, uh do you own any of these projects at all?
We own the majority of them, Supervisor. So we our our agency, um our agency is a is a developer, we're a developer.
Okay.
Um we we do partner uh with and 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 I will say for clarity, we don't sole develop. Um we co-develop. And the reason for that is because we're in four counties. And it'll it'll even make more sense if we are operating in a fifth county. Because of the large geographic area and the volume that we want to see in project development, uh it it just it it's such a specialized field that we would have to ramp up staffing by a lot. And it's staffing that's very hard to find because it's such a specialized field um that it is we believe we're putting more units on the ground by partnering. But with that being said, we are in the ownership structure. Um out of the twenty some odd projects that we've uh developed with project based vouchers, there's only two of them that were not in the ownership structure. They're both in Nevada County. And uh you know, frankly, we won't do that again. We 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 are um we are we are committed to remaining in the ownership. It 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 helps in a lot of ways. Uh we're local, we're on the ground. And so if there's there's issues with property management or just what have you, it's better that we know about those than than relying on a developer that may be from out of town, uh which is could be the case in many ways. So be being in the ownership structure um definitely carries a lot more work and responsibility for us. But there's a lot of benefits to it. So so yes, that's a long answer to your question. We are in the ownership structure on on the majority of them. And I will also say that it is the housing authority's discretion to issue a request for proposals for vouchers. So we we have to do an RFP, it has to be open and competitive. And we 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 have, um in order to develop as as an agency, we've created uh a nonprofit entity, a five oh one C three, for the sole purpose of development. And so that entity applies for the vouchers. And HUD HUD does a review of that to make sure that 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 we did it uh within the procurement that is allowed by HUD. So so yes, we're in the ownership structure on 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 all of them and going forward. Um I do want to clarify one.
Um we had another question, so.
And that was on the.
Did you get the clarification you needed?
Percentage, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
The emergence, the E H V vouchers, we're not allowed to project base those. So um you know, that that definitely lowers a little bit. It's not many. I think you have fourteen, I believe. Um but Congress, when they appropriated that program, they have a sunset on it. So that that program will eventually run out and there will there will be no more appropriations. It was supposed to be till twenty thirty, but just recently we got a letter from HUD. It looks like that might run out by twenty twenty-six. Um so we have to you you have to remove those from your calculation of the thirty percent that we can project base.
Appreciate the answer, and that's always been kind of the uh basic concept behind the project based voucher. But I heard contractors, I wasn't certain um how you were functioning, but I appreciate the clarification. My last question is, housing authority uh as far as the way it currently sits is over the entirety of the county.
Yes.
Um I see in the board that there are city members and county members that are represented on RHA. Are we planning to have a larger discussion with our city entities? Because I'm not going to say it's a personal preference, but building houses where all services can be found and not just in random uh uh unincorporated areas, um especially these types of project based uh ideas, is probably better served within a um city area or at least close to proximity. And so are we planning on having these conversations with our city partners? Um and is it just two board members from the county that would be joining in uh based on what I'm seeing here? Or one, uh how how does the membership look like? And uh yeah.
Gus might be able to answer that better, but I know we've been offered two seats on the commission, and that is typically the standard for all counties. All counties have two seats. And then how we decide who is in those seats is kind of up to us. Um take it away, Gus.
Yeah, no, uh excellent question. Our bylaws to do indicate uh two members uh per jurisdiction. Um and the majority of them, I would say all but one, seat two of them. There is one, and that is the city of Calusa. They've opt they opted years ago to only seat one. And uh and and that's totally fine. Um you know, we would like to know ahead of time so that our legal counsel can work with your legal counsel on amending our our bylaws and our JPA to just get that in writing, you know, what what your jurisdiction's desire is, is is to seat one or to seat two so that it's clear in the documents um that would be amended. Um as far as the cities, you know, I it it's not my intent to 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 go out there and 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 add them to our board. Um i- i- in the four county area that we operate in, some cities are in. Um and the and and those are the cities of Yuba City, Calusa, and Livock. Those are the only cities um it 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 doesn't. As I mentioned earlier, it's all about relationships. And so if we're going to look to project develop, because you are correct, uh developing in a unincorporated area is much more difficult and in many cases impossible. Um that the majority of development is going to happen within your two cities within Lake County. You know, but it it not to exclude them, um but it there does come a point in time where how big is too big for for a board. Currently, our board is fourteen folks. Uh it is, there's one HUD required tenant commissioner, as it as HUD calls it. And that has to be a participant of one of your uh housing programs. In this case, um this commissioner is a participant of the voucher program. And then we have um thirteen other members from jurisdictions. I would say roughly half of them are elected officials, and you probably know some of them. Um and then the other half are appointed by those jurisdictions. So so that is an option Lake County could have if they opt opted to seat two is 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 uh like some of our other members. Some do one elected and one appointed. Uh some do two elected. And as I mentioned, the city of Calusa does only one, and that is an elected. The bylaws don't specify uh that they have to be elected or not. It could be one or the other. Or or a mix, a hybrid of the two. Um but yeah, I mean, I think I think if we are going to look to project develop, just like any other developer, we'll have discussions, we'll have conversations with your cities. I I don't want to say that it's my preference to exclude them on the board. It it just then you're just adding additional layers of 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 oversight and what have you. But you know, we'll we'll definitely could entertain that.
And I appreciate the response. Thank you very much.
Sir, you have your hand up, uh.
Yes, um and so I wanted to make something clear about the project based vouchers. And I know we're really trying to manage expectations in the last two years. Development has become much more more difficult. However, we're still developing. We have a project that's about to close on the construction financing in the next couple of months. And uh we're we're still, we're still uh uh doing a lot of work in that arena. Um if it wasn't clear before, these project based vouchers are kind are a leverage tool. And so I'm doing some very rough mental math here, but for every project based voucher that we've been able to assign to a particular development, um we've we've been a ratio of one to four. We get an additional three affordable units into that community. Um so um it it's not just going and 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 hey, we have a project based voucher in this community, and that's a great thing. No, that project based voucher actually produced three more affordable housing housing units in that community. And so um we've gotten very good of determining just how many uh PBVs uh a project needs um and um and then leveraging that for the community for even more units.
That's a great point, Marco. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will say that there has been advocacy, and it's just growing year after year to because it needs congressional approval to expand or to increase that thirty percent cap that we're allowed to project base. Um there's been many surveys done by advocacy agencies in in around the country, but in California that many housing authorities are hitting their cap, uh have already or are about to. Um you know, within a couple of years. And so that has produced um a lot of advocacy. A bill was written by uh authored by Congressman Panetta from the Santa Cruz District uh to expand it. Um and um it it hasn't, it hasn't really gotten to the president's desk yet because it obviously is such a uh small bill, for lack of a better word. So it needs to be packaged in the in the right, um you know, in the right bill. Uh but that's growing because now there's housing authorities outside of California that are running into those same issues. And um you know, the 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 ask, I think, of Congress from advocacy has been to increase it to fifty percent. Um we believe that if it does get passed into law, it'll probably end up at forty. But even at even at forty, that's you know, that's that's a big bump. So especially in California where we are the state with the most vouchers uh than any other state. So um that that would just only benefit Lake County. And Marco's right, they they do leverage. It's not a one for one. They 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 bring in, they bring in the ability to um leverage debt essentially to um uh build more units. And that's why there are these little golden nuggets that are very important for projects.
Just making sure, anything else to add or?
I will add that they have a good landlord recruitment program also in it for the regular choice vouchers, which is something we haven't been able to stand up uh in a very robust manner um at all. Okay, Lisa says. Uh we'll sign you up if you reach out to us. Um but they uh had some very creative ideas around landlord recruitment that sound like they've been very successful for the choice vouchers. Um and I also think Lisa Judd has a couple of comments.
She hasn't got a chance to come up and speak, so thank you for doing that.
Good morning, Board. Um thank you so much, Lisa Judd, Deputy County Administrative Officer for Housing. Um I just want to lend my support, um a strong advocate for turning to this new model of regional housing authority. Um the voucher program um is very highly regulated, um and it takes a lot of technical expertise. Um and I think that by allowing our voucher program to grow, we're going to be doing a service to our community. Uh one of the things that I've noticed here in in Lake County is that we have a very small voucher amount of vouchers for our community, our size. Um and this is not I I wouldn't say in proportion to what you would expect. Um and part of that is because we haven't grown our voucher program. So we're talking about project based vouchers, but we're also talking about growing the program so that we can have more vouchers in the future. Um I think that a population our size, we should have a lot more vouchers. And my hope is that the regional approach would allow us to grow that program so we could have more vouchers. I do have one question though for Gus, and that is uh if you're at your cap for project based vouchers now and adding Lake County would allow you to expand that, would we be guaranteed to have those project based vouchers in Lake County?
Gus?
Oh, I mean, most definitely. I think it would be kind of career suicide for me if if we regionalized with with Lake County and said, thank you, I I have a couple of projects in Sutter and Yuma County, and I'm going to use your vouchers to project base over there. I mean, you know, it we we wouldn't do that, and it's not what we do. You know, we're 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 not an out of town developer that comes in and you know, we're we're here. We've been we've been here since nineteen forty-six, forty-seven, I believe, is when the Sutter County Housing Authority started, and uh we've demonstrated to Calusa, Nevada, and Yuma Counties that through relationships and and experience that we're we're, you know, we 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 want to help the communities. You know, we look at it, we we look at each county and each city as its own independent community. And even though there is that that flexibility, and it's a great question, even though the HUD regs would allow it, we don't do that. Um you know, what you, one of the things you talked about um is adding vouchers. That is very hard to do. There's very few opportunities when HUD says, hey, we have new vouchers for you, apply. That 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 rarely happens. Uh so I just want to be clear on managing that expectation. It's they're kind of like Haley's Comet. They come around very few and far between. I would say in the last decade, we we've been able to add the mainstream voucher program, and each county got an allocation of those. E H V, as we mentioned, uh there has been a couple of opportunities to increase VASH vouchers, and we we jump on that opportunity. And then relatively new or relatively new to us, and we would love to talk with your staff if given the opportunity to regionalize, is there's a voucher program known as FYI, and that is called Foster Youth Initiative. And Alicia, you could speak to that better than me, but isn't it for foster youth that are aging out? Um and and they get the preference on this voucher and then housing for that target population, is that correct?
That is correct. They're referral based from service providers. We would enter into an MOU, and then we would receive referrals for qualifying youth. And they would receive a voucher that while they're on the program works like Section Eight, the HCB program.
Correct me if I'm wrong for the benefit of of the board and Lake County staff. That's still an over the counter program, whereas if Lake County says, hey, we can use ten of those that that we we apply to HUD for ten, and there's no there's no like window of opportunity to apply for, right? Like we we can just over the counter.
Correct.
Great, thanks. So so that's something we would love to 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 bring to the table if 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 your specific service agencies are in need of those kinds of vouchers. So those are the few opportunities where you can add vouchers, thankfully.
There's also non-elderly disabled um in conjunction with the regional center um for those adults who are not elderly but are disabled and need additional support. Um does Regional Housing Authority have those non-elderly disabled?
Yes, those are called mainstream vouchers, and we were allocated a hundred and forty of those um I don't know, five, seven years ago, somewhere around there. Um and those were, those a hundred and forty were allocated for um the four counties that we operate in. But if there's an opportunity to to apply for some of those, if given the chance by HUD uh for Lake County, then yeah, most definitely, we would love to apply for those. And yeah, those serve, as you mentioned, non-elderly disabled must be between the ages of sixty-one and disabled. And we maintain a pretty high utilization on on those a hundred and forty vouchers.
So my question to you, um if we join, do they, does HUD allow us to have an opportunity with the new numbers to like with mainstream or something like that?
I don't believe so. I think the only one that we're or well, I think that's going to vary. I think with VASH, there is occasional opportunities that are opened up. They call them notices of NOFAs, as you know, notices of funding, um or NOFOs, notices of funding opportunities. I think the VASH ones come up from time to time. And as Alicia mentioned, the Foster Youth Initiative vouchers, I think those are over the counter. Those, yes, day one, we could go after as many as you need. Um mainstream, I think that has opened and closed. I there there hasn't been any new opportunities to apply for the.
Right. I was just wondering when you absorb another county, if then they open that door. Okay.
No.
Um so and then it sounds like the Foster Youth Initiative is similar to the Family Unification Program.
Yes, that is our understanding, yes. We I think there are some differences. We do not have experience with the 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 FUP, as they call them, the Family Unification Program vouchers. We've we've never had any of those, but I think the FYI works very similar, is my understanding.
Um so I ran the voucher program for a few years over in Mendocino County, so we have the FUP vouchers, is what I asked.
Okay.
Um I think it's important for the board to know that um one of the things we keep talking about project based vouchers is that to get development into the county. And project base, I've seen it work both uh agency and whereas right now we've been going in the opposite direction, and we've been decreasing over time. Those project based vouchers are a given. So where people come and go off the program, uh those project based vouchers are stable. So that's also something to think of. And then I don't know if the Regional Housing Authority does this, but um I know that you have the possibility if you're in a project base, to switch over to a housing choice voucher typically after a year. There's a possibility for transition if those vouchers are available. So that's something else to think about as well.
Yes, no, you are correct. Uh the project based voucher participant, um if they meet certain conditions, does have a mobility or portability option. Um and Alicia can correct me if I'm wrong, but if a a a someone's using a project based voucher at a property and now the a a minimum of twelve months have gone by and they want to move for whatever reason, um I believe if they are in good. um, I believe if they are in good standing with that landlord ownership, um, good standing defined as not owing any rent, you know, they haven't damaged, they don't owe any money for damages, what have you. Um, and there is a voucher available, meaning there's budget to issue a voucher. Um, I believe Alicia and her team maintain a, a project-based voucher mobility separate waitlist. Is that, is that correct, Alicia?
But it's correct. We have a choice mobility waiting list.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you for that. I'm going to open it to the public real quick, unless you have something else, Lisa?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Just to make sure, and then we'll come back to the board. Um, I know that there's a couple other comments and questions, but I want to make sure the public has a chance before we delve further. This is a very passionate, uh, uh, group here and knowledgeable group. And I know we have a need, but I want to make sure that we can get the public-
Hi, Elaine Brown. Thank you. Um, I just heard you say that it was till 2030, and then Congress is, uh, I think you said Congress, and now it's just 2026. Just what is the reason, and is that reversible?
Is that your only question? Do you have more? Okay. And then, um, yes, if you could answer that, sir, briefly?
Yeah, sure. So, um, it kind of took housing authorities by surprise. There was a letter sent out to executive directors nationwide about, been going on three or four weeks ago now, um, that the appropriations will, will end, uh, December 31st of 2026 unless, and I believe the letter states that, unless Congress acts to renew that appropriation. So, um, the emergency housing vouchers were always intended by Congress to be, to be finite, to, to start and end. It was never, um, uh, the bill was never written for it to be, um, in perpetuity appropriations, like the regular voucher program. Um, it, it came, uh, that appropriations came through the, from the pandemic. Um, and it was always written that it would sunset. In fact, we, Alicia and her team, right now, any EHB, Emergency Housing Voucher, participant that no longer is on the program, whether it's a voluntary opt-out or what have you, and they, that voucher is, is given back to us by attrition, it, it's gone. It sunsets. Um, Alicia and her team are not allowed to recycle it and reissue that. And that went into effect in September of 2023. Um, so that was the guidance given by HUD at the, at the onset of this program. Um, but with appropriations, we were told would go to 2030. So we're not, we're not quite sure if this came from, uh, the new administration and changing that. Um, but there is the hope that Congress will reappropriate dollars at least until 2030, um, for the EHB. But right now, as we speak, we, we have to, um, we can't run that program, uh, after December 26th.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Um, Margot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Margot Cambara. Um, I have a, a couple of questions. First, um, I believe it was a deputy director who brought up an interesting, um, question is that if the county joins the, uh, Regional Housing Authority, will the Lake County vouchers for the project-based, uh, project-based vouchers stay in Lake County? And kudos to the Regional Housing Authority leadership for, um, his candor and saying, well, and his ethical response, like, well, no, um, those vouchers will stay in Lake County. But unless it's in writing or in, in the contract, leadership changes, policy changes. So if Lake County does enter into this, um, arrangement, I would strongly urge that we have language to say that those vouchers that we bring into the Regional Housing Authority stay in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, did you want to answer that or anything? Or I think that was more of a statement than anything, so.
Uh, yeah. I mean, we'll be going into a process where we, um, negotiate all of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I will say though, I don't believe, and, and, and you can check with HUD, Rachel.
I think we got the answer. But I appreciate your, you know, your, your knowledge. Um, we really have to move on, and I think we have a, a lot of comments and-
Sure.
And whatnot. So is there anyone else from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right. So I'll close public input, bring it back to the board. I know there was one statement. Any others? And then if you want to, if there's anything else you all want to add for current staff?
No, thank you.
Any closing comments? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just looking for, um, definitely agree with, uh, this transition and looking forward to the next steps that we have to take.
Right, right.
We're going to bring it back fast because we want to get HUD before they move to LA if you approve this today.
All right.
No, I just clarifying if we need a motion or is this consensus?
Do we motion for a direction with this situation as a commission?
Your board can, um, approve the, uh, recommended, recommended action by motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the, the board, sitting as the Board of Housing Commissioners, direct staff to begin the application process to transfer the LCHA to the Regional Housing Authority, RHA, of Sutter, Yuba, Colusa, and Nevada Counties effective January 1, 2026.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries 400. Thank you for the presentation. Gus, thank you for all the knowledge. I apologize for cutting you off here and there.
No, it's no problem. No problem. Look forward to working with you and your team.
All right. Thank you, everyone else as well. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item, which is our 6.5. Sitting as Lake County Board of Housing Commission, consideration of Lake County Housing Commission, Housing Choice Voucher Program, Administrative Plan for 2025, and signing of the HUD forms HUD 50077 CR and HUD 50077 SL.
Thank you, board. I am going to hand this one to Teresa Wold to introduce and speak on.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Wold. I'm the Program Coordinator for the Housing at the Department of Social Services, the agency that oversees the Public Housing Authority for Lake County. Today, we are seeking approval from the Board of Housing, Housing Commissioners for the 2025 Administrative Plan. Administrative Plan is the policy and procedure manual for the housing programs that we currently oversee. Each year, the admin plan is updated with revisions specified by HUD, plus any changes needed at the local level. Last year, we did a full revision of the admin plan due to the extensive programmatic and procedural updates required by the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act, which is known as HOPMA. Some of these changes are to be in effect July 1 of this year, and for other changes, the date is yet to be determined. Every year, we follow the same process. We properly notice and then hold a public hearing to go over any proposed changes to the admin plan. Prior to the public hearing, we have a 45-day public comment period. The proposed plans are posted and available for any member of the public to read and provide comments or recommendations. This year, the hearing was held on February 24th. Attendees included two members of the Resident Advisory Board, two members of the public, one of the, uh, BOS members, and the Housing Commission staff. During the meeting, staff gave a presentation detailing the proposed changes for the administrative plan. Along with this presentation of our plan, the PHA is requesting that the Chair of the Board of Housing Commissioners sign our annual civil rights certification form. The form is a statement verifying that we will perform our duties as required by HUD. And if there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer those.
Um, and don't mean to create a clarification, but there was two board members of the Board of Supervisors that were there. I think I arrived late, so that probably might be the reason for that.
Thank you.
Um, the, but I did appreciate the presentation and the understanding. It's such a large document. Uh, it's something that probably would scare people away from the program. I'm thankful for all the, uh, team members that help guide people through the process rather than dumping them with 900 pages of stuff to read. Uh, I, just a brief question, and I appreciate all the conversations I've had. The fact that it says expiration date is 3/31/2024 on the, uh, uh, documents that we are signing today, I just want to make sure that's not a problem.
All right. Go ahead, Lisa.
Although those forms are expired, new forms have not been provided by HUD, so we're moving forward with the current forms, um, and they are able to be submitted as they are.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. So I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the chambers would like to comment on this, and if there's anyone on Zoom? All right. I'll bring it back to the board, and I think there is action.
Yes. I'll, let's see, make sure I'm on the right one again.
It looks like it's a motion to approve the Housing Choice Voucher Program, Administrative Plan for 2025, and sign HUD forms HUD 577 CR and HUD 577 SL. Authorize the Chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 400. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for your work, and I'm glad we're moving forward with all of this.
Me too. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So now we'll move on to our 6.6. Uh, 10, it's our 10 o'clock public hearing, Consideration of Appeal AB 24-05, a Planning Commission's denial of major use permit, UP 2014, Nina Starr Farms LLC, and Nevelina Bogdanova, applicant and appeal, appellant, location 23180 Shady Grove Road, Middletown, APN 004006-16. And it looks like we have Community Development Director, Maria Turner.
Good morning. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. I believe that Supervisor Owen, due to her absence, has requested a continuance of this item.
Yes. And Lloyd, I didn't know if you want to add?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So on, on the request for continuance or continuance issue on this item, um, your board may want to take in any, uh, witnesses who may be sworn, uh, who may need to be sworn in relation just on this issue of the continuance.
Okay. And so, uh, Johanna, if you want to do the swearing? Okay. And if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand or be, or turn on the camera and acknowledge that you will be sworn in for this. That way, if you need to make a comment.
Okay. Two. All right. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Audience, if you are here to speak on this, please, yes. And if you stand, it would be-
If you could just stand, so like-
Thank you.
It's just acknowledging that you're swearing in. Okay, thank you. Um, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, thank you.
We have three on Zoom. We have Nina Starr LLC, Donna, and the last hand lowered, but there is another one. All right.
All right. And so, um, just real quick, if there's any comments from the board, um, I know that ideally it would be, um, I think it would be respectful for us to continue this for Supervisor Owen, as it is in her district. And I, I know that you all have done that for me in certain instances, so I'd appreciate to reciprocate.
I'm in support of that.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'll open it up to the public to, did you have anything else, Maria, before I, I do so?
Nope. Uh, Johanna's working on the next date and time in case the board supports a continuance.
Okay. And so briefly, uh, if anybody would like to make a comment about this, uh, let's keep it to the continuance of anything at this time. Um, and if there's any comments, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Hi. Uh, good morning. My name is Jamie Brusisco, and I live in the area in question. And I just found out about this on Sunday, and I know some of our neighbors have not had a chance to be informed about, uh, what's going on. And so that's why I am requesting a continuance, supporting it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers? All right. How about Zoom? All right. All right, if you can unmute and, uh, state your name for the record.
All right, thank you. Uh, my name is Justin Ebalar. I, I represent Nina Starr today. Um, I'm not sure why I'm not appearing on the screen, um, but hopefully we'll have that fixed for next time. I just wanted to, uh, um, mention that, um, while we did work hard, uh, to prepare for day, today's hearing, um, uh, I do understand the importance of having Middletown's District Supervisor present here, uh, as well as the community's desires to, to have her here, uh, as well. And so, um, while it's a bit disappointing, um, uh, to have to wait for a later date, it's completely understandable, and we have no objection.
Thank you. All right. Any other comment? All right. With that, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Uh, do we, are we deciding a time here right now? I know Johanna's working on that. So April 1st at 10:00 AM? All right. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
And Supervisor Owen will be here then, so that's ideal. Okay. Um, do we need a motion for that, Lloyd? All right.
I'll move to, uh, continue the, uh, public hearing in consideration of appeal AB 2405 of the Planning Commission's denial of major use permit, UP 2014, Nina Starr Farms LLC, Neveline, uh, Divana applicant and appellant, location 23180 Shady Grove Road, Middletown, APN 004-006-16, to the date and time certain, April 1st at 10:00 AM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that will be April 1st, uh, at 10:00 AM on the agenda. Thank you very much for that.
You may wish to take up 7.2 since it's not quite 11 o'clock.
All right. We'll do 7.2. Consideration of following advisory board appointments, Big Valley Advisory Council. And, uh, this is for, uh, is this for one position? Two? All right.
Or an alternate?
Okay. All right. So, uh, two vacancies, one public and one alternate. And so I'll go ahead and give this over to the BVAC.
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, uh, going to ask that the board, uh, support in appointing Sidney Giberson to the alternate position and, uh, hold off on further consideration of the other open position, that being because Supervisor Pyska and I are doing further outreach within the community to make sure we're, we're getting the word out to all areas of the, of the Big Valley Advisory, uh, communities within that boundary, uh, for recruitment. So that's why we want to hold off. And the, the Big Valley Advisory Committee currently does have four regular members, and the alternate can fill in and serve in that role until we, we finish outreach.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, any other comments? Uh, well, okay. So I'll open it up to the public for any comments or... All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd move, uh, that we appoint Sidney Giberson to the alternate position for the BVAC Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 400. Let's see. We have like 30 seconds, right? All right. All right. Our next item on the agenda is our 6.7, Consideration of Update on Drought Water Shortage Task Force and Drought Resilience Plan Advisory Committee Membership and Activities. And we have Community Development Director Turner and Water Resources Director Upodier here.
Thank you, Maria Turner, Community Development Director and Water Resources, uh, Director Pawanapodier. On February 4th, the board considered a number of actions regarding, um, SBE 552, which is the, uh, requirement to develop a drought and low water resiliency plan. Among those actions taken by the board were to reorganize the existing drought task force to be the drought and low water task, task force, establish a, an ad hoc committee to work on that drought and low water resiliency plan, and transfer lead agency from water resources to community development. They also directed staff to go ahead and flesh out or identify members, potential members for this ad hoc committee and to return today to give you an update. So that's why we're here. You'll see on the, on the screen is the task force, though I think there's an error. Um, it was the task force before the Board of Supervisors assigned Supervisor Owen in place of Supervisor Sabatier on this task force. place of Supervisor Sabatier on this task force. One thing, go back, please. One thing to note is this task force is a standing task force. It was here before we needed to start writing the drought resiliency plan, and it'll still be in existence and operating after this drought resiliency plan is crafted. S B five fifty two, the project of drafting this drought resiliency plan, or we call it the drip, is about a year, and I'll show you that timeline in just a moment. But for that process, we do have an internal working group or that ad hoc committee with potential members compiled to present to you today. Next slide, please. Here is a list of the memberships. We've got Community Development, Watershed Protection District, Environmental Health, Public Works, Office of Emergency Services, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, all of our tribes, as well as Cal Fire, a couple water companies, the Farm Bureau, Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association, and Rural Community Assistance Corporation and the Lake County Land Trust. We derived these potential members by using the recommendations of the task force in last May's meeting, as well as ongoing discussions that we, we are having with the contractor, who they might be here today, I'm not sure. Christie and Bridget are the STANTEC staff that are supporting the draft of the drought resiliency plan. The drought resiliency plan is focused on state small water systems as well as domestic wells, and so after discussions with special districts, we decided that they, while they do have an important role on the task force, there's not really a direct need for them to serve on the advisory committee, and that's why you don't see them on this list right now. STANTEC, it's Bridget or Christie. Oh, are they here? Awesome. And we do have the STANTEC representatives here if you have more detailed questions, because I'm just telling you what I know and then I'm going to, then I'm done. Next slide, please. This is our schedule of activities for the S B five five two drip drought resiliency plan. On the top, you'll see above that timeline, you'll see the task force meetings. So we have one currently scheduled for April twenty third, and then that kind of launches the work of the advisory committee. Our first meeting for a kickoff will be in May. They will meet four times at, at kind of like landmark points of the process of drafting. The STANTEC staff will be responsible for doing most of the drafting, and they have been the ones identified by the state to offer technical assistance throughout the state for drought resiliency plans, so we're very confident in their ability to get this done. During that fourth meeting, the advisory committee is going over the draft plan, and then it returns or it goes up back to the task force for the task force review prior to presentation of the board. Again, this period is, it could be up to a year, but we're not sure that it'll take that long. We're going to go as quickly as possible. And then the last attachment was just an overview again of S B five fifty two in your packet, just to explain, to refresh you on what the drought resiliency plan is for. And I'll defer, or I'll pass it over to Puan if he has anything to add.
Yeah, so just to add a little bit to what Maria already said, like, so these are for the small water systems, like, which is not already covered by other agencies. So if it is covered by, like, a water system, they should have their own drought resilience plan, so these are the people who are left out or not part of any other drought resilience plan.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I guess I changed my mind on certain things that we've talked about in the past. There are some invited folks to the proposed advisory committee that I'm not fully understanding. I guess I need to better understand what our outcome is of what we're looking to produce. Cal Fire and not Fire Districts, Cal Fire is very specific about what they do, Fire Districts are definitely more engaged within our communities in a different way. Golden State Water and Cal Water, two private water agencies and no other water agencies. Seagull Springs Community, why specifically that one? I would prefer maybe seeing somebody like the Chamber of Commerce to represent our businesses and the impact on businesses as a whole, rather than a specific area. And I'm not certain if this is a countywide, everybody is going to be impacted, tribes, city and county? I don't think so, because county plans don't impact tribes, but are we looking at creating a countywide plan that will impact everybody and that everyone agrees to? Just because I'm seeing all of the tribes listed, but there's differences in the tribes and what they can bring to the table as well. Some have EPA, some don't have EPA, so some will have the ability to bring some of that knowledge, some of them have land, some of them don't. I just, I don't know what we're, what, what the plan is meant to do. Is it meant to say during a drought, this is the restrictions we're looking at everybody doing so we can all sacrifice equally together? Or what, I'm, I'm kind of confused by the list, and I'll just be blunt, I, I, Community Development has way too much on its plate, and I would much prefer not seeing Community Development at this point. Again, I've, I've evolved and changed my mind, and I apologize, but we have so many important projects in the hands of Community Development that I want to make sure those projects are successful, and adding this on top with such a, what appears to be a semi hasty timeline has me worried. Those are my comments.
I would like to defer to Christie or Bridget to just give us a brief overview of what a drought resiliency plan actually covers, if you're available there. Great.
Hello, Board of Supervisors, thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to speak today. The drought resiliency plan will cover state smalls and domestic wells within the county's jurisdiction, and so while it's true that tribes may or may not be beholden to the plan and what is included in the plan, we felt that they were an important part of the process, and so we wanted to include them as members of the advisory committee. And I will note that though they are invited, they do not have to participate, and that's part of the beauty of the advisory committee being ad hoc. It enables them to participate if they would like and to the extent that they are able. And I apologize, I was joining as a panelist, and so I may have missed Supervisor Sabatier who had other parts of the question that I did not answer. I'm happy to elaborate further.
And I could just be brief, Cal Fire instead of our Community Fire Districts, Golden State Water and Cal Water, which are private water where there's no other water that's represented, neither is a special districts for Lake County, and then a Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment versus something more countywide, such as maybe the Chamber of Commerce, and maybe I'm not understanding what that association is, but it just, just, it brought questions to mind when I saw the list.
Thank you, Supervisors Sabatier. We are happy to include County Fire in addition to Cal Fire or in lieu of Cal Fire, and so appreciate your comments there. We also can include the Chamber of Commerce as opposed to or in addition to Seagull Springs. And then the reason we included the private Cal Water and, Cal Water system is because they've been an important organization in consolidating the state smalls and domestic well users throughout the county or including them in broader regionalization efforts, and so we wanted to include them. But again, we defer to your preferences there.
And I appreciate that comment. I'm actually concerned about their consolidation of other smaller entities into what is a very expensive access to water for those who eventually end up under Cal Water and Golden State. So while I appreciate their capabilities and their willingness, it's, it's also a future concern of what will it cost to get water from those agencies in the future. So I don't know what to do with it, I just needed to bring up my concerns.
Any other questions?
Well, I think special districts should be added, is there a reason why they're not?
Yes, because special districts does not deal with state smalls water districts and, or water systems and domestic wells.
Okay.
But Robin and I did discuss it, and she's comfortable remaining on the task force because she'll get, special districts will have review authority and input at that time.
And so the drought task force that's listed on the first page with her name, and then the next is what the board...
I think it might...
Yeah, sorry.
Correct, yeah, the task force is, is that standing task force that will review this plan before it comes to the board. The ad hoc committee is meeting only for that specific purpose, to sort of provide input during the drafting of the plan.
Okay, and so is there, there's other water services as well, like Nice, Upper Lake, or Cloud, or is there others in?
I don't think so.
I mean, is that what you're looking at, is having more, or?
At least a variety of perspectives and, and needs and issues.
Okay, alright. I don't know if that's possible, but I just added those because those are the ones I know that are also water providers, but, so any other questions on that? I'll open it up to the public for anyone that would like to comment on this.
Betsy Con.
Betsy, if you can unmute and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Betsy Con, Upper Lake. I have three comments, and they sort of address a question I have. In the first place, this drives me crazy that you guys constantly refer to things as ad hoc and standing. They don't obey the Brown Act, they don't publish minutes and agendas, they're not open to the public, and in fact, there's not a representative of the public in any of the lists of suggested participants. You have a clean water program, you have people in the watershed support system, people in the environmental support system, they need to be included. But think about this, you're dealing with small domestic well systems, fifteen points of delivery, I think, or less if I'm not mistaken, those are not regulated by these municipal water companies, the public water systems, or the corporate water systems. They don't, if you have a small water system, it's not in, it's not a recipient of those purveyors. Not that you shouldn't address the whole conflict over what different purveyor qualities are, you have public water systems, corporate systems, and municipal, sorry, mutual stockholder based, and there's an awful lot of conflict. We constantly hear about this. Some of this is going on in the city of Clear Lake right now, where they're trying to figure out how to get all three different types of water purveyors to help the city develop. The last thing I want to mention is, you need to consider what your municipal code or zoning ordinance changes would be, including your Board of Supervisors policies for, you know, who is a participant, what is a standing committee, what is an ad hoc committee, you know, the, but please, please, this happens all the time, and the public deserves to have clarity on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other on Zoom? Alright, so I'll close that and bring it back to the board, I didn't know if there's any, there's no action to be taken on this, this is just an update. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you. We're, we're good.
Any other comments from the board or questions? Alright, thank you for, go ahead, Supervisor.
I'll just make one last comment. It makes sense to me that this be inclusive entirely in the county, because drought issues are not jurisdictional issues, they don't stop at imaginary lines, water tables expand further than those lines, and so I think the way that it is identified with all of the tribes in the county is good, if that's the perspective we have, but it would need to include the cities as well, because I think we all need to be on the same page on how to deal with drought and not have one jurisdiction doing something that does not help the other one as we're trying to deal with drought. And so that would be my perspective, because I think we need to all play together with an agreed upon plan when we're dealing with emergency situations such as drought.
Alright. Anything else to add? And I don't know if we could even make any action on that or anything, but I think you've, you've heard in...
Really looking forward to getting going on this.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point three? Alright, seven point three, consideration of presentation of twenty twenty four housing element and general plan annual progress reports. Yes, we can take one moment. Let's just take a five minute break. Thank you.
How long do you want it?
How long do you want it?
Why is that flashing light I see on the mirror?
All right, we're back from our break. We're going to continue on to our seven point three. Consideration of Presentation of 2024 Housing Element and General Plan Annual Progress Reports. Director Turner?
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. I want to clearly differentiate today's item from our ongoing Lake County 2050 General Plan update. This is, what is before you today is an update on the 2024 Housing Element and the 2008 General Plan. These are regular reports that we present to the state to just let them know how we're doing on what we said we were going to do for the last 20 years. And so I have our senior planner, Laura Hall, here just to point out some of the highlights on how we have been doing this last year. I'll turn it over to her.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Laura Hall, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. And I'm here to report on our general plan, our housing element update, and how we're doing. So this presentation includes the RENA that we need to meet for our sixth cycle 2019 and 2027 Housing Element, as well as a 2008, or 2008 General Plan and 2050 General Plan update. So in 2024, we received 28 entitlement applications with the following types of housing, and 85 entitlement permits that were issued. And we received 81 building permits and 26 certificate of occupancies that were issued. For our RENA from 2019 until 2027, this lists the number of very low housing units we would have to meet, which is 332. Low housing units, 224. Moderate, 207. Above moderate, 576. The second column shows that how many units we have met to date. And the third column is the remaining units that we need to meet in order to meet the state's RENA allocations.
And just to take a moment, for those who don't live in the Housing Element like we do, RENA numbers are Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. So every Housing Element cycle, which is a period of six years, the state decides how many dwelling units we should be able to build or accommodate within that next six-year period. They send that overall number to either the jurisdictions, county or commission of governments, or council of governments, or in our case, since we're rural, they send it to the Lake APC, the Area Planning Council. Then that group divvies that whole number into each jurisdiction. So we received the county number, and then the cities received their number as well. And so for every six-year Housing Element period, we're looking to make sure we're satisfying our RENA's. If not, we'd like to have this many houses built because it takes care of not just the housing stock we lost, but the anticipated growth in the future. But this is, so that's what RENA numbers are.
Thank you. For the general plan, I'm just going to provide an overview of what we accomplished last year. We had two general plan amendments and rezones. One was for to correct the zoning on one property, and the other was to turn a firehouse into a single-family dwelling. These are some of the achievements that we met in 2024. Forty-four projects went before the planning commission, and we met six. These numbers are going to be off a little bit because we're currently working with the state on submitting both annual progress reports. So they may change slightly. But we ended up meeting 16 very low units, 13 low units, 14 moderate, and 38 moderate. Those are not going to match what's in this power presentation because it's been uploaded. Or we heard from HCD two days ago, and we're starting to make the revisions to the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. We had two general plan conformity projects, which included the Wolf Creek Bridge project and a vacation of, or vacate of Collier Avenue. And we also, another department also completed the 2024 Regional Transportation Impact Program.
And go back to that slide, please. For those watching, GPC's General Plan Conformity determinations. According to the state government code, whenever a jurisdiction acquires land, gets rid of land, builds stuff, they have to, they have to go before the planning commission with this proposed project and make sure that it is consistent with the general plan. We are not to act outside of the community's vision for its neighborhood.
I think we missed a slide here. Okay. These are some more accomplishments we met last year, which was 2025 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. We completed noise studies when required for SEQA analysis. We hired a new resource planner who oversees SEQA for all of the county departments. And the county continues to work with tribal members, and tribal members are now included in the 2050 General Plan update. The Community Development Department also drafted a RFP to retain consulting services to meet AB 1359 compliance, and that's for geothermal projects. Now it comes to the county to oversee. The state no longer oversees the power plants. So we have to hire someone to hopefully oversee those services because we do not have the in-staff technical knowledge for that. And we've, and we also, the Water Resources Department also continues to oversee programs throughout the county. And we completed one land use evaluation and site assessment for a property on prime farmland. And in 2024, our stormwater grading inspector continued to inspect mines and report to the state.
Just one moment, going back to that previous slide, although we do, why does this keep going in and out? Our resource planner is currently compiling a syllabus to bring our understanding and education on overseeing geothermal up to par, so that we are working on bringing that back up.
And so we also received the following grant funding last year. 150,000 LEAP funds that went towards the update of the General Plan 2050, and REAP funds in the amount of 149,682 for the same.
Just to add, also included in those LEAP funds was the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, which we do expect is going to significantly inform our Housing Element when we do that update as well. So we're leveraging those funds for a future project.
And we're also including in this presentation work that's been done on the 2050 last year. And that includes the General Plan Advisory Committee, three meetings from March 15th to January 11th, or July 11th. The local area plan advisory committees held 10 meetings. And the local area plan meeting series one occurred from April 8th to May 1st, included the following areas. And there were three focus groups, stakeholder meetings that were held in, from May 20th to December 19th. And we worked on, and this is the Housing Action and Implementation Plan that Mariaa just mentioned. And there is work on the Climate Adaptation Plan. And preparation of the draft environmental impact report will begin in the spring of 2025 to spring of 2026.
And just to clarify on that last slide regarding the 10 layback meetings, it did stop. I'm not sure why we ended the counting on October 19th because it doesn't include the approximately 30 other layback meetings that took place in the subsequent four weeks.
And so staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors take the following actions. Consider the Housing Element Annual Progress Support and General Plan Progress Support, and allow oral testimony or written comments from the public.
Thank you. We are not requesting any action from the board today. This was a presentation just to bring the highlights to you. We are currently working with the state Housing and Community Development to upload our APR reports as required by state law.
And that's the end of the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? All right, I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions or concerns on this item. Zoom? All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll go on to our next item. We have, what's 1136?
Calendars.
Calendar is all right. Who would like to start?
I can.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Attended the First Blue Ribbon Committee of the Year meeting last week, and they are working on a survey to try to reschedule those meetings that were set on four days the rest of the year. I met with the LAPC Director to get some training to learn more about that. Attended the judge's breakfast last week. Also, the Emergency Medical Care Committee meeting, and the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Meeting, as well as the North Coast EMS meeting. I had a tour with the Assessor Recorder's Office. I attended Tango Mike to go present that proclamation. I attended a presentation from the Redwood Audubon Society on a Schindler Creek project that is going on in the future. Thank you Supervisor Pyska for the invite to attend the NorCal Mountain Bike Interscaloostic. That was very impressive, and I was excited to see that going on in our county. Let's see, I also toured the Air Quality Management District yesterday. I'm volunteering on the Water Resources Hitch Survey. Was able to see Hitch yesterday. They're very active in Adobe Creek in my section, and I was able to count 25. So that was pretty exciting. Had a meeting with the Lakeport Mayor. I'll be at the Fire Board meetings tonight. They're going to be interviewing six candidates and potentially making a recommendation to send to us, which will be on our agenda next week for Fire Board appointment. Tomorrow, I'll be helping with the community food project. For eight weeks, we've been serving hot, home-cooked meals to the Circle of the Native Mines peers, as well as all the residents at our Hamilton Haven Shelter out on North Lakeport. And tomorrow's our last one of that project. We have first five meeting tomorrow. And I'll be attending the Sheriff's Foundation Dinner this weekend. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Last week, let's see. Yeah, last week, we, last Thursday, we had a celebration, well, we had our Ag Advisory Committee meeting with the first one since last year, which was a really good catch-up on everything. One of the things of note there was talking about the change, the changes that are happening. And it seems about 10% of the wine grapes over the last 18 months have been removed from the county. So it's something to monitor. There were older vines, but with changes in the industry and wine grape sales and wine sales down, something for us to just be aware of and monitor. But then there's another Ag Advisory with Fish and Wildlife meeting coming this week. So activities happening back in that group, which was good. But then the Home Hardening Tour that we had hosting Napa County organizations, Sonoma County organizations, Cal OES, Cal Fire, and our local groups, because we were celebrating getting to the 20th House. So very exciting. We're right on target, and I just also want to say that we are still the only pilot project in the state that's begun work. The rest of them are just still waiting to get everything in order before they can start. So it's very exciting. And Supervisor Owen was able to meet me there and get a tour of the project. And then over the weekend, well over 1,000 riders from most of California, San Luis Obispo up, came to Six Sigma for two days of racing. So thank you Vice Chair Rasmussen for coming. It's incredible to see how many people coming to Lake County. It's incredible to see how many people coming to Lake County. And I just want to say that all the kids and coaches, this is their favorite course. So we do see those families coming back throughout the year, which is what we want to see and what we want to continue to see. And then yesterday, there was a big tour that was organized at the special district site in Middletown with the Carbonizer hosted by Clerk and Earth Foundries with CAL FIRE and PG&E. And we had some county representation there to get a demonstration of the project. It's incredible. There's, I mean, gosh, thousands and thousands and thousands of trees that are all piled up on that property that, those are the trees that PG&E cut and left in people's yards. And with the advocacy that Chair Crandall and I did with RCRC and CSAC, really holding PG&E accountable to pick up the trees that they were leaving, they were cutting them so that they wouldn't be a danger to PG&E's infrastructure, but they were putting them on the ground right next to people's homes, along roads, and in communities. So we were just moving the risk from their infrastructure to the community. And it was, I think, two years of us going to Sacramento and pushing as hard as we could. And the response to that was this pilot program where PG&E is investing in Clerk. Clerk hired contractors to go and get all the trees, bring them to the location, and they're being, so they're being burned in the carbonizer, which, you know, it's very little smoke, creates biochar. And so it's really incredible to see all that biomass being taken off the landscape and removed in a safe way. Locally, it doesn't have to be trucked out of county, which is what was happening before. PG&E would take all those trees and drive them for a couple hours out of the county. So really excited about that. And it is the only pilot in the state where PG&E is removing the trees. So our colleagues in El Dorado County and the other counties that worked with us, hopefully they'll see these pilots soon. But this is where it's rolling out for the first time. So thank you to all of our county staff who worked on the permitting for that. It's a really big deal. And we're making a dent in all those trees. This week is a busy week. I've got a call with Superintendent Falkenberg tomorrow morning. We have our OPR pilot project meeting, but I think that that's been postponed. NCO board meeting. And I am going to head to Marin for tomorrow night and for Thursday for the Wildfire Task Force meeting. Tomorrow night is a reception with a speaker, one of my favorite climate scientists, Daniel Swain will be speaking. And then Thursday is the Wildfire Task Force meeting. So I've pre-arranged several meetings with my colleagues that are on the task force, as well as with CAL FIRE leadership. The Fish and Wildlife Advisory Meeting is in the chambers at 6 o'clock. I'm not going to be able to make it in person. That's Fish and Wildlife and Ag Advisory together. So I'll have to check that out via Zoom. I just won't be able to make it in time. And then Monday, I've got meeting with CAO Parker and then back on the first.
Supervisor Sabatier? Yeah. Just go ahead and move forward with what's going on this upcoming week. I need to go figure out some paperwork issues dealing with PEG this afternoon. I think we'll have the time for that. I don't mean to jinx us. Tomorrow, a meeting with the grand jury. I, before that, I have a COC Housing Navigator meeting. And if I'm able to be released by the grand jury in time, I might make it to a Conocti Water Board meeting, as I was invited. It's not Conocti Water that would be taking the lead, but many of the folks that are either on the board or staff or in the surrounding vicinity of Conocti Water and the avenues are looking to create a firewise community. And so wanted to talk to the board about that and provide some support in how we can make that happen. Later on, Lake County Fire Protection District meeting and a KUSD Board meeting as well, starting Thursday with Judge's Breakfast. And fairly wide open until I have a Potter Valley Project meeting that just was set up. And on Friday, I'm meeting with some constituents who have some grave concerns and wanted to speak with me. No set time at this moment, but that'll happen on Friday. And then on Monday, Middle Creek and CAO, and preparing for Tuesday.
All right. I'll start out with last week. Prior to going to a meeting in Cloverdale that we had for the Potter Valley Project, I stopped at the UCC Extension and met with some of the staff there. What was really cool is my grandfather lived next to the property where all the sheep were herded there before. And I never knew it was the UCC Extension. And so when we took the tour, they took me right up to the side of where my grandfather's property was, and I took a picture. And the whole time I lived there, or ever stayed there with my grandfather, even as a kid, I never jumped the fence or went on that side. And they told me, you know, you could have just came over, it's no big deal. But either way, it was really nostalgic and it was a really good tour. Following that, we went, Supervisor Sabatier and I went down to the Cloverdale meeting about the situation with the Potter Valley Project and Scott Dam. And a lot of folks were interested in what we had to say. Supervisor Sabatier did a great job. Supervisor Gore was there, and the municipality had some folks there. Mayor, I think his name was Todd, I don't remember his last name. Yeah, Todd Lands, Mayor Lands was there. And Madeline Klein from Mendocino County was there as well. Fire chiefs, they did a really great job. And it was just a really robust and somewhat controversial, but at the same time, for us, it felt good to be in a room where people were really happy with our advocacy and our stance on it and feeling like they had some sort of hope, you know, in regarding to, I mean, even on the document they gave out saying, "It's not a done deal," you know, and just, yeah, I don't know, it just felt really good. You know, usually when we go to these meetings with the folks about the Potter Valley Project, we are the ones that are like sitting there and trying to talk and talked over and all that other good stuff. So went really well. We'll see where it goes from here. There's probably going to be some more in the future, and I know we're discussing some things this week on it. So yeah, that went well. We had our special meeting Friday, as you all know, and that went, I feel like it went pretty good. We covered a lot. It's a really good chance for all of us to get on the same page and then even fine-tune some of the things that were set before us in Vision 2028. So we've got a lot done that day to discuss, and it was a really good experience. Saturday was awesome. We had the first dump day for partnership with Community Development Cal Recycle. 50 tons is what was reported by 360 Junk Hauling. And just so many people coming and dumping, and some people five or six, I think one group brought 10. But I mean legitimately reasoned, it wasn't just like, oh, they have, you know, they're working and they're doing, no, they had this amount in their yards in different areas. So that was really cool to see. Vance Ricks and I actually went, like we did last time, we picked up three trailers, and we just went to people who needed help or stuff that was just sitting on the side. And so that was really cool, picking up some things and going to the areas that are the problem areas, if that makes sense. So we hit those. So yeah, that went well. Next weekend, there's another one on Saturday at the same spot next to the fire, Nice Fire Station, from 8 to 1. And so we'll see if we get the same amount, less or more. Either way, I'm glad to see it happening, and it was really, really accepted by the community. They really enjoyed it. So yesterday, I went to Sacramento. The State Office of Tribal Affairs invited me to the California Tribal Nations Summit to speak as a supervisor. Last year, I went as a tribal leader, but this year, they asked me to come speak as a supervisor. And so basically, I was on a panel where we discussed the intricacies and collaboration of counties working with tribes and how other, and just getting the tribes an idea as how they can work with their counties and whatnot, and some of the things we do. And so one of the things I mentioned was the tribal liaison. We have a tribal liaison. The state does have that model. They have some tribal liaisons as well. And that's actually why we were at that meeting, because they set that up. I talked about our partnership and water resources with HITCH, our departments with HITCH. I talked about the Tippo Group that we put together, and that was, that was a meeting last week we had. And so that's how we're trying to build those relationships and whatnot. There's been a lot of more inclusiveness with tribes on advisory committees in different areas, so that that way, there's a voice for policy-driven committees. Also, just really doing things that haven't been done from the past. And that's, we're taking those small steps. And I mentioned to them that it's important for them to designate a council member or someone from the community to come to the meetings from their tribe's perspective, rather than, you know, or approach their supervisors, of course, and all of that as well. So that was a really fun thing to do. I enjoyed it. Got back late, but it is what it is. Tomorrow, I go, today, I go to RCRC, Rural County Representatives of California, so I'll be going to that. Starts at 8:00, so I should be able to get out of there in time to come back to John T. Klaus, which is in Clear Lake Oaks tomorrow. And then, you know, I might have to, if I can stay the whole time, I will, but I know I have to go to the North Shore Business Association, which is at the, is the Lucerne Bistro. And so I'll be heading into that as well. It's like a mixer. Let's see, Thursday, Supervisor Sabatier, you mentioned the meeting we'll be having about the Potter Valley Project. Saturday is another garbage dump day. I mentioned it earlier, but I want to make sure everybody knows. 8 to 1 at the, right next to the Nice Fire Station. Monday, CAO meeting, and then county staff meeting again about the Middle Creek situation. And back here Tuesday for our board of supervisors on April 1st. And so that covers the calendars. We're a little ahead of the lunch hour, but I mean, it's not going to hurt to have an extra seven minutes, will it? All right. So we'll go ahead and break now for lunch. We'll be coming back and dealing with 6.8, 6.9, and then going to close session after that later on down the line. Thank you very much. We'll see you after lunch. We'll see you after lunch.[1257.33]